Good afternoon. We welcome all of you to our city council meeting on this Thursday, October 8th, and we welcome all of those that are in the chambers here as well as all those watching this by our Zoom meeting. So if you'll join me, those that are here for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now we'll have roll call.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Mr. Brand?
Here.
Ms. Gadalia?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
Here.
And now if you please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. This evening or this afternoon, we have a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation will be for Fire Prevention Week for October 4th through the 10th, and Councilmember Randy Sternad will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Deputy Chief Hanson, thank you for coming up. So this is a proclamation. This is the proclamation for Fire Week. Whereas the city of Marion, Iowa is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Marion. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally and others' locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 3,700 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association and fire departments in the United States responded to approximately 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two of every five home fires start in kitchens, with 31% of these fires resulting from unintended cooking. And whereas more than half are re-reported, non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fires themselves. And whereas children under the age of five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Marion's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the cooking areas, and keep anything they can catch on fire away from the stove tops. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and all therefore more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Marion's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Marion residents are responsive in public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in Kitchen," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the fire in kitchen, excuse me, the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, I, Randy Sternad, on behalf of Steve Jensen, Mayor Protam of the city of Marion, do hereby proclaim October 4th through 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Marion. And I urge all people to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week in 2020, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Marion's fire department and emergency services. Congratulations, Chief.
Okay, our next proclamation will be for the American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Days running October 16th and 17th. Councilmember Colette Atkins will read that proclamation.
Okay, I think we have Amy Pazarek, right, from Marion Post 298. Awesome. So, whereas freedom is a cherished privilege to be treasured by all citizens of the city of Marion, and whereas this privilege has not been free but carries with it immeasurable sacrifices by our veterans. And whereas in yearly observation of said sacrifices, I hereby honor the veterans and their importance in the preservation of our freedoms. And whereas the poppy is a symbol of remembrance for all veterans who served this country and aid the living veterans and their families. Now therefore, I, Colette Atkins, on behalf of Mayor Protam of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim October 16 and 17, 2020, as American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Days, and urge all citizens of the city of Marion to pause and honor our veterans by wearing the poppy, the American Legion Auxiliary's memorial flower.
Okay, now it is time for presentations. This is time for presentations from external entities regarding current council action and area projects and events. And this evening, we have a presentation from Foundation Two regarding the community liaison program. And Chief, you could do one more thing for us as part of your comments is, I think this is a very exciting area. If you could also give us some background on how this liaison came about, how the discussion started, just to give us some background on that as well.
Yes, sir. The Marion Police Department, I started talking to Foundation Two back in March of this year. I know Foundation Two has had mobile crisis teams out. They were talking to Chief McHale back when he was here before I got here. We talked about the program that Cedar Rapids has that's been very successful. We wanted to try to emulate that. We kind of got sidetracked a little bit by the storm and the COVID when we couldn't meet together, but we kept pressing on. And we're finally able to get together and come to an agreement which you guys are going to see tonight. Again, I think it's exciting for us. The officers are excited for us. And I thought it would be good to bring Drew Martel and Emily Bloom from Foundation Two to come up, tell you about what they do, and answer any questions you have about the Foundation Two program.
Hi, thanks for having us. I'm Drew Martel with Foundation Two. To talk just briefly about our, our community liaison program, we really kicked this off about five years ago in partnership with Cedar Rapids Police. We did a couple grants through the DOJ. This is a national model, so this is something that is kind of seen as the future of policing, mental health partnership. I'm sure I don't need to tell all of you that mental health, law enforcement, emergency rooms, substance use, they all have kind of collided together. We put law enforcement in positions that they don't want to be in and that they're not best equipped for. And we put citizens in positions that they need support that's not always available to them. The idea behind this is to get a counselor partnered with law enforcement to step in in situations that might be mental health crisis, substance use crisis, behavioral health crisis, to provide a support in the community, but also to provide a bridge into the mental health realm, and hopefully divert from unnecessary levels of care like the criminal justice system, emergency rooms when they're unnecessary, and stuff like that. We've had a lot of success with our Cedar Rapids program. We also, we actually have a sister program with the Benton County Sheriff's Department as well that's been quite successful. It's, it's a more rural area, but we have a counselor up there partnered with them. They go on several hundred calls per year. So in the first few years, a single counselor could respond to 200 to 300 dispatches, and those are, are not time limited. So they can spend time with someone who's in crisis and really try to get them the resources that they need. They're also able to connect them with our mobile crisis teams, which have been active in the Marion community for several years now. Are there any questions?
Renee?
Hi, thanks for being here. Question about, do you have a recommendation for Foundation Two staff levels in terms of city population?
Okay, so if, make sure I understand correctly, how many law enforcement liaisons per population base?
Yeah, we're about 40,000-ish. I'm wondering, is one like a great, is a great, are we deficient? You know, how do you measure that?
Our hope is that it is, that is an awesome question. Our hope is that it is data-driven. So we want to get one out there and see what the demand looks like. And that's what we've done with Cedar Rapids. So we have now a second law enforcement liaison with the Cedar Rapids Department just started last month. And that was after about two years of looking at the data. And we also look at when do we need that person available? How should we partner them, stuff like that. But we're hoping to really get data over the next year that will help guide the direction that you guys go with this program as a, as a partnership.
That was an excellent answer. Thank you.
It's my boss. So if you guys say that frequently, it's a really good, my boss is boss. So as frequently as possible.
Well, there's no question, this is certainly going to be a great addition to our community and to our police department and to our citizens. So I think we're excited to see, have somebody on staff at the police department. I think it's going to be a great addition. Appreciate the chief's effort to make this happen and your support as well.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us.
Any other questions by anybody? Comments? Grant?
Actually, not a question, but a comment. Chief, I'm reflecting on the time I spent with you getting my initial briefing when I joined council in, when was it, March, April, May? In May?
Yeah.
And I remember, I think the question I had was, where do you spend most of your time? Where do your officers spend most of their response time? And I think at the top of the list, if not certainly within the top three to five, was responding to mental health-related concerns. And so I just want to congratulate you for the long haul effort that you've put in to achieve this. And I really want to thank Foundation Two for engaging with the city because this is, I think, an absolute primary kind of thing that will assist the entire community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to our public forum. This is comments that can be received from the public. This section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda, but not associated with a public hearing. Do we have anybody waiting for this?
Yes, we have a couple. So the first one will be Vicki Baumann at 3151 Silver Oak Trail, and it's regarding the LuCor Bridge over Indian Creek.
Okay, Vicki, go ahead. Are you on?
I am. Good evening. I like to walk almost every day and use the walking sidewalks north of the bridge. The city also made a beautiful walking trail on the former Indian Creek Road south of the bridge. And the only way to get to it is by walking across the bridge. Twice I was almost hit by a truck and car going more than 35 to 40 miles an hour while I was trying to get to this trail. Since I walk almost every day, I have seen others have similar close calls. I decided instead of just complaining, I should call Marion City Hall to see what could be done. Darren, a city engineer, contacted me and suggested that I write a letter to the city council members about my concerns and asked that a pedestrian bridge be made a top priority. So on August 5th, I wrote to the city council, and as we all know, August 10th, the derecho head. I want to say I was quite impressed with Renee Gadella, even with everything going on. She got back to me and encouraged me to get a petition with 20 signatures and submit it to the council. I did this the week of August 23rd, and after listening to the meeting Tuesday, I understand that there were some questions concerning whether the city or the county is responsible for the bridge, since the north side belongs to the county and the south side belongs to the city. I contacted Lynn County Supervisor Brent Olson on Wednesday, and he got back to me today. I believe he is going to be present tonight, so I will defer to him to explain the county's position on this matter. I really do appreciate that the arborist plans to trim the trees and bushes, which will help visibility. I drove over the bridge today, and drivers coming from the south cannot see a pedestrian until they are almost on top of them on the bridge. I also want to mention that there are bike lanes leading up to the bridge on the north side, and there is a sign stating, "Bike lane ends may use full lane." So you already have signage indicating the bridge is used by bicyclists. So I'm afraid I have to disagree with the discussion on liability for the city. Now that the city council is aware of a problem, and if nothing is done, wouldn't that increase your liability? And I realize that however many years ago the bridge was built, it wasn't intended for pedestrian or bike use. But now there are hundreds of people living on the north side of the bridge, and we have no safe access to the trails on the other side. I'd also like to note there has been a school built less than a mile away, and I'm wondering, how can these kids safely ride their bikes there? So I would first like to recommend that the pedestrian bridge be put on the CIP list, if it isn't already, for construction as soon as funds are available. And second, work with the county to have some kind of signage installed to warn the drivers of the narrow bridge and the potential for bikers on the road. I would say pedestrians also, but I understand you don't want to encourage walkers going across the bridge. However, I feel that is actually quite unrealistic because there are a lot of walkers going across there every day. Thank you for your time, and I am available for questions if you have any.
Okay, Vicki, thank you for your comments. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We have another individual? Brent, would you like to provide us with your comments at this time?
I did receive a phone call from Vicki and talked to our county engineer, and we do share and are responsible for the bridge. It's not something that you probably financially want to participate in as far as a pedestrian bridge or expanding the bridge. It's my understanding that the bridge has quite a bit of life left in it, 20-plus years. And since the area would be likely annexed shortly, I guess, in a short timeframe, and we tend to not invest in those things where they know that it's going to another jurisdiction. However, after talking with the county engineer, and I live there and I'm pro-trails and want to see that it's being crossed now, so how can we do it safely? The county would participate in putting up signage financially and do it ourselves if we, if you wanted us to. Road paint, anything that would alert drivers that there are multi uses to that road and bridge, both vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians. Any way that we can accommodate that, we'd be more than happy to help. I did talk to our legal counsel. I encourage your legal counsel to visit with ours. We put up and done those things on other intersections. And I'm not sure about the inviting litigation angle in that we're not putting up signage to encourage or invite people to do what they're already doing. It's to alert motorists that people are doing another mode of transportation, and it's a less-than-ideal bridge for multimodal use, but it is what it is. So any way that we can be of help there, if you're going to do a pedestrian bridge in the future, or you put forward funds for some other mode of transportation, I know we'd probably be open to financial participation if it was through maybe the MPO or, or something else where we know that there's even more jurisdictions putting funds in there. I think then, then it would be justifiable to a county taxpayer to make that investment, even if it was going to be fully annexed. So that would be, I guess, my comments, and I would encourage your staff to work with ours, both the county engineering and legal, so that we can address it immediately as far as traffic calming, and then to long-range. I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thanks, Brent. Do we have any other individuals for the public forum?
Yes, Cersei Stumbo will be talking about the appointments to the Community Equity Task Force.
Okay, Cersei, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm Cersei Stumbo. I live at 339 Pheasant Avenue in Marion. I am a member of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity Steering Committee and am actually one of the representatives to the new Community Equity Task Force. We sent a letter earlier today to indicate our support of actually three items on your agenda tonight, and I'm here on behalf of mayor to voice our support for one of those items, the motion in the consent agenda to move forward with naming the final representatives to the Community Equity Task Force. We believe that convening this task force will be a major step toward addressing all of our demands at mayor, Marion Alliance for Racial Equity, and to make Marion more welcoming and inclusive, and we appreciate your efforts to be responsive. We acknowledge that the final slate of task force members is rather racially diverse and gender balanced, though it looks like there could be even more racial diversity among task force members. Also, as the task force works to define its charge, it may benefit from having more diversity in gender expression and disability ultimately among task force members. So we'll certainly encourage the task force to consider its own makeup as the work commences. But in the meantime, we really do want to commend you for moving forward on convening the task force, and we encourage you to complete the appointments this evening by approving the slate that's provided in the motion. And then other members of mayor here tonight to speak to the additional actions in your agenda on behalf of mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cersei.
The next one will be Sophia Joseph. She'll be speaking regarding Foundation Two agreement.
Sophia, go ahead.
Sorry, I was talking. Okay, I'm Sophia Joseph, and I am a co-lead along with Janessa Carr of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. We did send a letter earlier in support of three different items, and I'm here to speak to the resolution number 28907 approving an agreement with Foundation Two for creation of a law enforcement liaison with the Marion Police Department. We wholeheartedly support this resolution and acknowledge that it's, as well a response to our demand that there be a mental health liaison available for crisis calls. We hope that this will reduce racial disparities and unrest, and will approve outcomes across Marion through many different groups that are marginalized. We are especially pleased that there will be staff outside of the police department, and we really want to encourage that as time goes on that that remains an independent position. We also hope that eventually this will go to a 24-hour position. I recognize that there might be certain times of the day that a crisis is more likely to occur, but as we all know, like a mental health crisis certainly isn't on a schedule. So we would just love to see eventually that this is something that covers, you know, all hours of the day. But we really want to thank the Marion Police Department and Foundation Two for making this happen and making it a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Anybody else?
Yes, next, Anna Klimer, I believe, in support for the appointments.
Anna, go ahead.
Hello, I am Anna Klimer, and I live at 2475 McGowan Boulevard. I am a member of the Marion Alliance for Racial Equity Steering Committee as well, and I am speaking on behalf of the mayor to encourage us, you to approve resolution number 28909 and voice your support for renaming Squawk Creek to Wanati Creek. We have a long way to go to authentically ensure that we truly honor Indigenous peoples among us today and in our community and surrounding communities, and engage in reconciliation in whichever way we can. This name change is a step in that journey, and we appreciate that you are considering signing a resolution in support. So thank you for taking these steps tonight.
You're welcome. Anna, thank you for your comments. Do we have anybody else? Okay.
Becky Bolzinger.
Okay, Becky, go ahead. Becky, are you ready? Is she still connected? Becky, are you ready for your comments? Does it look like she's waiting out there?
She's unmuted, so I'm going to guess she has some computer issues.
Okay, Becky, are you able to communicate with us?
Your Honor, I would suggest that since we do have the other opportunity for public input later, if we want to go ahead and move on, if they are able to stay on the meeting, they could potentially weigh in at that point.
Very good. All right, with that, if she's available later, she can make her comments. Let's move on with the regular agenda. We'll start with the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes items A1 through F7, resolutions numbers 28816 through 28902.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda encompassing items A1 through F7, resolutions 28816 through 28902. Does anybody have any comments or questions from the city council? If not, all those approving, approving the consent agenda as proposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The consent agenda is approved as presented. We'll now move on to the regular agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve minutes of the September 17th, 2020 city council meetings.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the September 17th meeting. Any questions or comments? Renee?
I'll be abstaining. I was not in attendance.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of approving the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And we have one abstention, so that is passed.
Mayor Protam, I move to approve resolution number 28903, authorizing internal advance for funding for an urban renewal project, economic development incentive for Mojo Properties LLC from the Stormwater Management Fund to the Capital Projects Fund in the amount of $62,500.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 28903 regarding an internal advance of funding. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of approving resolution 28903s, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number 28904, approving fiscal year 2020 through 2021 operating budget transfer from Stormwater Management to Capital Projects for an economic development grant payment to Mojo Properties LLC in the amount of $62,500.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve resolution 28904 regarding the transfer. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approving? All those in favor of approving resolution two eight nine zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine zero five, approving the economic development grant payment to Mojo Properties LLC. In the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the elevator project located at seven nine six eleventh street.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve resolution two eight nine zero five regarding the payment to Mojo Properties. Any questions? All those in favor of approving resolution two eight nine zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine zero six, approving payment to, number one. To Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine zero five regarding a contract for Debris Tech LLC for debris monitoring services. Any questions?
Your honor.
Yes, Grant?
Lon, if you could remind us, is this a reimbursable amount from FEMA ultimately?
We will get reimbursement from FEMA for up to seventy-five percent of the cost of those. And then the state will reimburse another ten. Ultimately, the city could be responsible for up to fifteen, but on the total project. We have other avenues through force account labor donations to be able to hopefully offset some of that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Randy?
Thank you, Lon. Does this, what does this represent of that? Is that, would that bring their accounts receivable to date then? Or are we anticipating more receipts coming forward from this entity?
They're continuing to work, so I would anticipate that we will have more pay requests coming in from them. Debris Tech is the one that provides the monitoring services, so they're the ones that are estimating the loads onsite, following the trucks around. Doing the photographs, coding the locations, doing all the documentation that we need to be able to submit. But as we continue to do debris collection around town and in the parks, they are continuing to do monitoring services.
Okay, thank you. I was just looking at that and assuming that this number being routed off was obviously not the final, the final numbers for us. I'm assuming that's just bringing us up to somewhat of a current number.
I'm afraid they're just starting.
Thank you.
It'd be interesting sometime to get a recap of that total cost. That is going to be quite eye opening. Anybody, anybody else have any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine zero six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine zero seven, approving an agreement with Foundation Two for creation of a law enforcement liaison. Contract position at the Marion Police Department.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine zero five regarding the Foundation Two agreement. We had a good discussion on that at the beginning of our meeting. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution two eight nine zero seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved unanimously.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine zero eight, approving purchase from Hyman Fire Equipment regarding fire hose replacement in the amount of twenty-six thousand ten dollars.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine zero eight regarding fire hose replacement. We had an update on that on Tuesday. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution two eight nine zero eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution is approved.
Your honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine zero nine, approving support for renaming of Squaw Creek to Wanati Creek. To the U.S. Geological Survey's Board of Geographic Names.
Second.
We got a motion and a second regarding resolution two eight nine zero nine for the support for renaming Squaw Creek to Wanati Creek. Any updates or questions or comments? Randy?
I was doing some research for a constituent that had some questions on the trails and I see that the. Google Maps has already updated this name, so.
Really?
They must have been very quick to respond to the local community. So yeah, as you pull up local parks near me, you'll see this one labeled already.
Yeah, the park has already been renamed. That has already been approved and being used evidently. So this is for the creek. Any other comments? All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine zero nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I make motion to receive, file, discuss, and defer, excuse me, refer to legal. A petition regarding the request to trim trees and bushes, install speed signs and warning devices and build a pedestrian bridge. Next to the Luke Gore Bridge over Indian Creek.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to receive, file, and discuss and refer to legal. So we had some discussion comments on this earlier in our public forum. Now, I know one of the things we talked about on Tuesday was to get a legal opinion. So can you update us on where we're at on this area, Mike?
Yeah, well, I know that the discussion of applying for CNPO funding did come up during the Tuesday discussion. I did talk to Kesha Billings with the Planning Department and this is actually on the Fiscally constrained plan right now. It's in twenty thirty to twenty thirty-four. And the project estimate is one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and six. That's the bridge and doing the side pass.
Okay.
So the bridges themselves are probably two to three and then by the time you fill in the ditches and do all the other work. I will let the city attorney speak to the legal issues.
I think this, your honor, this is one of the areas where my opinion doesn't necessarily match. What we would all probably like to see happen for the people who want to use the trails. Obviously, we want to encourage people to use the trails we've built. We put a lot of time into that. However, unfortunately, sometimes I have to be the messenger with news that doesn't match. What we necessarily want to do to make people happy. And in this case, we have a duty to ensure that our bridges, roads. Bike paths, sidewalks are all up to legal standards for the purposes which they are intended. And that we guarantee that they can be used safely for those purposes. This bridge is not built to the standards intended for pedestrian traffic. And as such, if we put signage up that says. Beware pedestrians, pedestrian crossing, things like that, we would effectively be saying to the public, this bridge is safe for you to walk across. I understand that that sounds counterintuitive. If people are going to walk across it anyway, I get that that is the position that people are taking. However. We would be opening ourselves up to liability if people were walking across that and were injured or harmed. The other side is that this is not up to ADA standards. And so as soon as we open it up to pedestrian traffic, we have to ensure that it's up to ADA standards. We can't ignore those. That's a federal standard. We can't say we're gonna grandfather this bridge in, especially when it's not to standards to allow pedestrian traffic. As far as bike signs go, it's okay for bikes to be on the road. That's an okay thing. And so where the bike trail ends and bikes are allowed to ride there, bikes and pedestrians are not treated the same way for liability purposes. And so I understand that people are going to continue to walk across here. If we were gonna put signage up, it would be my position that our signage should discourage pedestrians. As opposed to do something that would encourage them. I'm familiar with that road quite well. I used to drive it every single day, more than once usually. I know that people speed on it. Speed signage is something I don't have any issues with that, but I don't believe we have any grounds to say slow for pedestrians. Without opening ourselves up to that liability. And. The way that I think about this is if we have people who are breaking the law or using other city facilities for something that is unsafe. We're not gonna warn the rest of the public like, hey, these people are breaking the law or these people are going against our city ordinances, so you need to watch out for them. Instead, we're gonna take action to ensure that people are doing what is safe for them. And if people are going to continue using this, and again, I understand that there's those trails on the other side they want to get to. That has to be at their risk and they have to understand that that's a risk they're taking. We can't ensure that they'll be safe. Even putting the signage up would potentially encourage more people to use an unsafe bridge as opposed to discouraging people from driving in an unsafe manner on it.
Okay, so let me clarify one key aspect of that. So are you saying that if we were to put that signage up that we've been talking about? About pedestrian crossing there? That if a pedestrian was crossing on that bridge and got hit by a car, that the city could be sued?
Yes, because that bridge is not up to the standards required for pedestrian traffic. It's not white enough. So in order to allow pedestrian traffic on there, we would have to have a bridge that met those standards. And it would have to be ADA compliant or we could potentially, even if nobody is hit out there. If we have a pedestrian walkway across that bridge and it's not up to ADA standards, we could open ourselves up to a lawsuit that avenue as well.
Okay, Grant has a comment?
I think two questions. So we have full awareness at this point that the bridge does receive pedestrian. Traffic. Given the fact that it's not designed. It's not the standard for pedestrian or ADA compliant traffic. That's saying that very well. Do we have a liability, given the fact we have that composite knowledge at this point, should somebody be injured?
We are not encouraging it. In fact, right now, we're publicly discussing this and it's up to you guys what you would like to do with this. Council makes that decision. Ultimately, I can give you my opinion, which is that it would open us up to liability, but. Counsel is able to say, we have legal's opinion, we disagree, we're gonna do something different. But we are discussing it and if counsel takes the position that we are not going to put these signs up. And we take the position that this bridge is not intended for pedestrian traffic, so we're not going to put pedestrian controls on the bridge. Then you would be publicly taking the stance that this bridge is not intended for pedestrian traffic. Does that make sense there?
Okay.
Although I would not discourage if you wanted to do some sort of. Statement that said this is not for pedestrian use. I have no issues with that type of signage, but that gets to be a bit cumbersome on sign as well. And we don't put not intended for pedestrian use everywhere on every bridge.
I guess for the rest of council, I'll just state my, my thoughts. I, I think it's important for us to take. Counsel's inputs and consider them carefully. But I think in my view, in my pedestrian opinion. I think we need to have some form, form of signage in order to alert drivers that they may encounter. An obstruction that they wouldn't normally expect there and that obstruction might be somebody on foot. However, that needs to be worded. That's what I'm in favor of.
The comments, Renee?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Baumann for supporting her petition tonight and being available if we have questions. And Supervisor Olson for getting involved and representing the county view and then to also our engineer, Mike, who's spent a lot of time with this. You know, I, I agree with what Grant is saying. You know, we can't just stick our head in the sand. I totally get where legal's coming from and you're doing your job and I thank you for that. But we can't ignore what's already happening there and, you know, we talk about reaching higher. I feel like we should continue to look for some. Signage solution, whatever the semantics are. Hey, maybe we're protecting the drivers. Maybe there's a motorcyclist who could be injured by hitting a family of four walking across. When I went by again yesterday to take a look at the space on either side for the pedestrian bridge. And at that point, I didn't realize it was in the CNPO plan and while that's far away, I'm glad it's there. There was a family of four and the mom was in the front. They were like ducks and the two kids were behind and then the dad was in the back and they were all the way to the side and. You know, whether we do anything or not, it's gonna continue to happen and I would argue that it's going to increase with the school, as Ms. Baumann pointed out. As well as residential development to the north and the south, so not doing anything, the status quo is not acceptable to me. And so the tree trimming, I think, is great, but I would like to see our legal speak with county legal. Because maybe they have some creative thing that they've done before that would make our legal feel more comfortable from a signage standpoint. And as Supervisor Olson mentioned, any other type of traffic calming, whether it's paint on the road. I don't know what the solutions are, but I feel like we need to do more than nothing and that's kind of where it is right now. Cause it's traversed a lot. In the winter, it's not a problem, but nine months out of the year, I think it's, it's getting a lot of use. And so we've got to get involved and do something because it is what it is. It wasn't built for what's happening, but what's happening is happening. So I think we gotta get a, catch up to it. I don't think we can get ahead of it, but we need to catch up to what's happening.
Collette?
Just a couple, maybe a couple of questions. So if I understand, we still could do increased signage for bicycles, right? So we could have paint and increased signage for bicyclists. Is that, because?
Yeah, so I mean, we could paint a bike boulevard or something on there for bikes. Cause technically a bike can use any road that isn't a minimum speed that you'd have to keep up with. Obviously, we'll have to work with the county since it's a joint jurisdiction bridge. They actually perform the inspections on the bridge, but I don't think that they would have a. Reason not to, to do that. But yeah, boulevards and stuff like that could be painted on there.
Second question is, so what's the current speed limit? Can you remind us of that and would by decreasing the speed limit make a difference?
So the current speed limit, I would have to pull it up, is probably thirty or thirty-five. In order to lower the speed limit, we would have to do a speed study out there. I will remind counsel that speed studies are based on the eighty-five percentile speed of the actual vehicles out there. So if the, the vehicles are traveling at fifty. That tells us that that's the speed that it should be, so it may not necessarily give you the solution that you want. Again, that's an engineering study and we do put engineering judgment in there, but it's supposed to be within five miles of eighty-five percentile. Now, just because I tell you based on the engineering study that it should be, say, forty-five based on the speed study. Doesn't mean that city council doesn't put it as twenty. Ultimately, you, the city council is the policy deciders. And you tell us what to do, whether it is against or in concurrence with staff recommendations.
Sure, thank you.
I can tell you, right now, we're in the process of designing the Tenth Avenue side pass that go along one fifty-one. And in that situation, because there's not enough clear space in certain areas between the lane of traffic. And the side path that's gonna go in, we actually have to put barriers up. In some places, it's a six inch curb and other areas, we actually have to put jersey barriers in because they're too close. Even in speed limits that are thirty-five miles an hour. So I just, and obviously in this case, there is no separation when you have the pedestrians walking in the lane of traffic. So there are guidelines out there and so we have standard of care that we as professionals, engineers have to follow when we look at this stuff. So again, I can give you a recommendation, doesn't mean you have to follow that recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll put in my two cents worth. As I listen to all of this, yes, pedestrians will continue to use that bridge. The cars will continue to use the bridge and we can put some signage out there and say beware pedestrians. I would lean towards the sign that says this is not designed for pedestrian traffic. And I would rather see the direction that our attorney's talking about and telling the pedestrians, this is not a bridge designed for traffic, for crossing. Be extra careful. I mean, by putting that sign out, you're warning them that this bridge is not designed for it, is not white enough to do what they want to do. Versus say, gee, look out cars, pedestrians may be coming. I'd rather put the signage out there saying. You know, pedestrians, travel at your own risk. This is not designed for pedestrian traffic. So I'm not sure I agree with the direction Grant and Renee would talk about. I would go signage in the other directions. The tree trimming is, I think everybody agrees about the tree trim and that's a, that's probably an easy one to do. All the rest of it. Sounds like we have some more discussion to occur, so I guess, did anybody else have any other comments? Randy, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to just throw a couple of things out here. One is this, for the benefit of the, our audience listening here. I just wanted to also reiterate that the reason why these sidewalks seem to lead to nowhere is because obviously during the infrastructure change out. And the new construction, switching out these roads, obviously was more cost prohibitive to build the sidewalks now. For the anticipation in the future, so I know it seems ridiculous. So I, I know it seems ridiculous that these sidewalks go, and then they stop, and then there's a pause, and then it starts and, and goes back up again. But I did wanna, uh, just again, remind everybody that the reason for that is it made more sense to, uh, to build those out now during those, uh, construction phases. I guess what I would also like to encourage is, is we're not, we're not identifying or trying to state that we don't have concerns about it. Because I, I think I can speak for the council to say, yes, we all have concerns for pedestrians. We just gotta find the proper way to do this. And I think it's gonna take some work with us, with the county, uh, to just merely find ways and creative ways to fund and find that temporary solution. If it's a private, um, walkable path, bridge that goes across that, it's a means of just finding the ways of how we're gonna pay for it. These are, you know, the development is driving that out there. Um, the people that are building and buying these homes are what is, is causing this. And, uh, you know, perhaps there's some, I don't know. I don't know if there's hookup fees or things that we can be adding on to some of these things. I, I kinda chuckle in my own mind, thinking the old days when we had toll bridges. The reason we had toll bridges was obviously to fund an expansion or to switch out a bridge in the future, and that's kind of where we're at on this particular deal here. So I, I think if we could just collectively find some way to finance, um, this process and try to find a remedy to it. Yes, it is on our long-range plan. I appreciate the staff that sent that out for clarification for it, so it is something that's on there. But I as well, am very concerned about something that had no intentions for this. Um, we wouldn't ask for people to be walking across our property that, um, was unsafe, and that's what this is. And I, I feel as if, well, we try to allude to the fact that, you know, we're identifying these, but enter at your own risk, that's not a, a safe manner either. So, uh, I just wanted to kinda throw a couple of points out, thank you.
Anybody else? Will?
Yeah, I, I don't think anything's gonna stop anyone from walking across that bridge. It's been happening before there were trails there too.
Yep.
Um, or sidewalks going to a trail, or what, or the redevelopment of the road. So I would be in favor of us putting some type of signage up to warn motorists. If it's, if, only if it's, let's say it just says, narrow bridge ahead, maybe that'll slow people down, or lowering the speed limit to twenty-five or twenty or whatnot, in just that area. And I would like to see something in the CIP for that bridge, so that it gets in there at least, or the, for the pedestrian bridge, not the road bridge. So, um, I would be in favor of doing something now as far as signage to, to warn motorists. Cause like I said, it's, no matter what, people are still gonna walk across that.
Okay, so the motion is to receive, file, discuss, and refer to legal a petition regarding the request to trim trees and bushes, install speed signs and warning devices, and build a pedestrian bridge next to Lucor Bridge over Indian Creek. So we have done that, we've discussed it. It certainly sounds like maybe there's some additional, uh, discussion to take place, maybe between legal, uh, of the city and the county. Uh, kinda sounds like if we're talking about signage, what that signage would be like. If we're painting the roads or lining each, there's some lines on the road, what that would be like. So I think we have, uh, some different opinions up here as to what that might look like. So I'm not sure, does that, I think we've complied with the motion. Is there anything else that you need to move forward?
To move forward, we would actually need an amendment to the motion to tell us how to move forward.
Okay. Anybody wanna try an amendment to this motion? Did I just kinda do that?
Your Honor, you can't actually do that.
Okay, I, what?
You can make the motion.
I can?
Yes.
All right. I would, I would make an amendment to the motion to read that we will refer to staff regarding the request to trim trees and bushes, install, install, install speed signs and warning devices, and build a pedestrian bridge, and come back with recommendations regarding, uh, the signage and the lines on the road.
Second.
Okay, so we got an amendment, so we need an, I need to get that amendment approved, right?
You'll do a vote on the amendment, and then a vote on the amended motion.
Correct. Okay, so now we have an amendment out there, any further discussion on that? Will?
For, uh, for it to be put into the CIP, do we need that to be in the amended motion?
Uh, if you're referring it to staff, I'm going to assume that's going to be one of the staff recommendations that comes back.
Okay, thank you.
And given that it's in the, uh, fiscally constrained plan for the CNPO, there should be a corresponding CIP sheet with that.
Renee?
One quick question, um, when do we, I know we meet annually for like that Friday and half Saturday to review CIP. When is that, like January or February?
We'll be doing it in January this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Okay, the amendment has been approved, or the, the motion to amend is approved. Now we will vote on the amendment as proposed. Any further discussion on the amendment itself? Okay, now, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. Okay, so the amendment is approved. Okay, now we'll move on to the next item.
Your Honor, I move to receive, file, and discuss the tac report regarding a request for a stoplight and/or rectangle rapid flashing beacon on Boyson Road and Newcastle Road.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second regarding the motion to discuss the tac report regarding a stoplight and rectangle rapid motion flashing beacon at Boyson Road and Newcastle Road.
Your, your Honor, this was the agenda item that the lady that was having technical problems wanted to weigh in on earlier. So I suggest, I know it's outside of our normal protocol, but in light of them having technical problems, you may want to allow them to comment.
Is she available? Okay, Becky, are you out there for your comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, Becky.
Wonderful. So I was prompted to request this after my daughter was hit by a car last summer crossing Boyson Road. We, we live on Newcastle. Um, and I found when I went around to get sign, signatures for the petition, everyone I talked to thought it was a great idea. There's so many people with kids, they try and cross to get over to the bike trail. If you're on bikes with little kids, it can be nerve-wracking with that amount of traffic. Um, there's kids that wanna, you know, cross, they try and cross to walk on the sidewalk to go down to the Bowman Woods Pool. Um, and I saw the, the report that they did with the pedestrian count, and just on an average day, in the middle of the summer, middle of the week, there were a hundred and seventy-six people who crossed Boyson Road from Newcastle. So I think that there is a lot of support in this neighborhood to have some sort of, uh, uh, like a flashing sign or something to get cars to stop just to allow people to cross safely. Um, that's, that's basically it for me, I guess.
All right, Becky, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, now back to the city council. Do we have any other comments or questions regarding this motion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I make a motion to direct staff to add the pedestrian crossing signage and crosswalk paint for the north-south crossing on the east side of Newcastle Road at Boyson Road, and put together CIP sheets for consideration of additional improvements as outlined in the tac report.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the motion to direct staff regarding this pedestrian crossing signage. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not all those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution two-eight-nine-one-zero, approving contract and bond with Canuteon Construction for the concrete foundations associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of eight-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution two-eight-nine-one-zero regarding the Canuteon Construction bid for the concrete foundations for the Marion Library Building. Comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution two-eight-nine-one-zero, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-one, approving contract and bond with Central State's Concrete for the site concrete associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of three-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution two-eight-nine-one-one for the contract with Central State's Concrete for the Marion Library Building. Any comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution two-eight-nine-one-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-two, approving contract and bond with Sea, is it Seahouse Masonry? For the unit masonry associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-two for the contract with Seahouse Masonry for the Marion Library Building Project. Any questions? All those in favor of approving Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-two, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-three, approving contract and bond with Peak Construction for the steel fabrication and erection associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-three-hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-three for the contract for peak construction related to the Marion Library Building Project. Any comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution two-eight-nine-one-three, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-four, approving contract and bond with Helitech for the ground improvements associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of eighty-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-four regarding the contract with Helitech on the Marion Library Building Project. Any comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution two-eight-nine-one-four, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-five, approving contract and bond with Boomerang Corp. For the site grading for utilities associated with Marion, with Marion, uh, Marion Library Building Project in the amount of four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-two dollars.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-five, approving the contract with Boomerang Corp. related to the Marion Library Building Project. Any comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-five, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-six, approving contract and bond with Culver's Lawn and Landscaping for the landscaping and site restoration associated with the Marion Library Building Project in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-eight dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-five, approving the contract with Culver's Lawn and Landscaping related to the Marion Library Building Project. Comments? All those in favor of approving Resolution number two-eight-nine-one-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make the motion to direct staff to request debris removal assistance from NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Services, for cleaning up debris in the waterways from the derecho storm, and stabilization of Indian and Squaw Creek and all waterways with the city boundaries.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the motion to direct staff to request debris removal assistance related to cleaning up the debris in all of our waterways within city boundaries. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the twenty-twenty-one thirty-fifth Street and Seventh Avenue Traffic Signal and Turn Lane Improvements Project, which encompasses Resolutions two-eight-nine-one-seven through two-eight-nine-one-nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the project calendar related to the two-thousand-twenty-one thirty-fifth Street and Seventh Avenue Traffic Signal and Turn Lane Improvements Project. Any comments or questions? That will be a major project. I mean, I go through that several times a day. That will need a lot of, uh, advanced notice to everybody in that area. It'll be a good change though. So, any comments? That's all right. Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion for this project calendar, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Okay, at this time, we have a public hearing regarding a preliminary site development plan for SNS Storage located south of North Gateway Drive and west of Partners Av- Avenue. This is coming from Medco and DMFALLC. The public hearing is now open. Give us an update regarding this.
But, uh, yes, Your Honor, and so, uh, this is, uh, SNS Storage, proposed to be located at the MEC just south of the, uh, Marion, uh, Police Department. And the facility, it's a storage facility, it's a little unique in that it's a two-story. It's got indoor, uh, climate controlled in the, in the storage facility. In the backside is, is, uh, more circular in nature, and you won't see the garage doors. It's a little, it's a little different concept, uh, it's a new project. The city has received the, uh, proposals all through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commissioner has viewed it, made recommendation to proceed with preliminary in site development plans, which are also on the agenda. I do know that, uh, Mr. Pelley, uh, is, is on the call, and he's, uh, wanted to speak to this during the public hearing, and I, I didn't notice if there was others that wanted to speak regarding it, but, uh, certainly I know he is one of them, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so at this time, we'll hear from anybody that is in favor of this project, and that would be Mr. Pelley.
Yes, we have Chad Pelley.
Chad Pelley, Chad, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, uh, council and Mayor Protem. Appreciate the opportunity, staff, hope everybody's safe. Um, I don't have a lot to add. Obviously, we're excited to be doing another project in Marion. Um, we think that this is a, a need that, that has a void, uh, in the area as well as in Marion. Um, as, uh, Tom has pointed out, we're at the point where I think after this evening, um, Nick Glue with Medco and I will be working to close on this property next week and begin construction, yep, this fall, which is good for, um, you know, the conditions that we're all under. If there's any questions that, uh, anybody may have at this time, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, appreciate the consideration.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Is there anybody else on the line to speak in favor of this project?
Yes, Nick Glue.
Nick, go ahead. Nick, are you on the line with any comments?
Can you hear me now?
Nick, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Nick Glue, President of Medco Holding Company LLC. Um, just to make the council aware from a process standpoint, how a project like this, uh, comes together. Uh, we've obviously been working, uh, with Mr. Pelley and his development team for the last handful of months. And, um, essentially, any project before it comes to P&amp;Z, and ultimately to council for approval of the site development plan, um, we, we make sure that as a full board that we are supportive of this. So we have gone through that, uh, process, uh, looked at, uh, pretty detailed, uh, colored, uh, renderings of what's proposed within the site plan. Uh, and our board is, uh, fully support, supportive, uh, of the proposal in front of you here this evening. So thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay, do we have anybody else to, with any comments related to this project? Okay, so these are the renderings of what the site would look like?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, do we have anybody else online to speak?
No, I do not.
To this? Okay, uh, if not, at this time, we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item.
Your Honor, I make a, I move to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-two-zero, approving a preliminary site development plan for SNS Storage located south of North Gateway Drive and west of Partners Ave.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number two-eight-nine-two-zero, approving the preliminary site development plan for SNS Storage. All right, so now at this time, does anybody in the city council have questions or comments related to this project? Okay, see you in- Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine two zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve resolution two eight nine two one, approving a final site development plan for SNS Storage located south of North Gateway Drive and west of Partners Ave.
Second. So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine two one, which is the approving the final site development plan for SNS Storage. Comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine two one, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, so at this time, we have a public hearing regarding a preliminary site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility on property, property located at 3600 Highway 151, and this is Hy-Vee, Inc. This public hearing is now open. Tom, give us a little update on this.
Yes, this is a, this is a project that's being contemplated by Hy-Vee. As indicated on the overhead here, they're looking at a separate building to the west of their building, just east of 35th, kind of tucked back behind, to the west side of the building. The facility is planned to be a small, a small facility for their Isles Online Pickup. There'll be bays for parking for folks that are needing to pick up groceries, and then there'll be a canopy project associated with that. Whenever a project like this comes in, we do go back and look at what it does for parking. And there are some spaces that are, that have been eliminated with this. The area is planned development. And in speaking with, with Hy-Vee and the, and the folks involved, this area is, is really only overflow parking and primarily the, the use of the parking is, is in front of the building. So we didn't feel like there'd be a severe or significant impact to any of the loss of parking, not to mention the fact that it's being built for people to not come to the store necessarily to shop, to pick up online groceries. So the world's changing, and this is one of the first, first of many projects, I think, in the retail world that will, will show some, some variables as we move forward into the future. So we did, as, as zone PD Plan Development, this has been backed through staff. It's been through the Planning Commission and recommendation to proceed is, is, has been provided by the Planning Commission. We did hold a public hearing at the meeting. And in the, in the past, there's been a lot of conversation when Hy-Vee does things out here, just because it is right adjacent to a residential neighborhood. In this instance, there were, there were no comments. We received no, no public impact, input regarding the project. So with that, so the recommendation moving forward is to approve both the preliminary and final site development plan.
Okay. At this time, we'll open it up for any comments for or against this development plan. Is there anybody online?
John Brem with Hy-Vee is available if you have questions or need, or want a presentation.
Okay, is there anybody here that has additional questions?
I will, this is Councilman Randy Sternad. I'm just curious, sir, if you could tell us, although this isn't going to impact my decision on this, but will you continue to have your greenhouse and will that be relocated onto the rest of your parking lot in the future for future promotions?
Yes, the store will want to keep the greenhouse. Obviously, they won't be able to locate it over on this side of the parking lot. They will need to come in, visit with the city about a new location, a new permit for that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. John, is there any, while we got you online, is there any other comments that you wish to make?
Sure. Just a little background, so you understand where this is coming from. We've had Isles Online Program, which is, allows our customers to order their groceries online and then either have them delivered to their home, or they can opt to pick them up at the store. It's less expensive to pick them up at the store, and so we're seeing about seventy percent of the people who make those online orders opt to come to the store and pick them up. For the last two years, four parking stalls in front of the store and a little space up in front near the cash registers was sufficient for the service. But when COVID hit, we saw anywhere from three hundred to five hundred percent increase in that business and that traffic count. And at some of our stores, we were seeing cars backing up, you know, thirty-five, forty deep in front of our stores, waiting to get their groceries picked up. And we had cars backing out in the public streets. So we could, we could see the future coming. All, all the folks that have been trying this, a lot of them are sticking and staying with it. So we think that this is now a permanent part of our business. It's taking approximately ten percent of the volume of the sales in the store now are going to these online sales. So this is, this is a way to make that service permanent, more convenient. It gets, it separates the traffic from people who are picking up their groceries, from the people who actually want to go in the store and shop themselves. So there's the safety factor there that this addresses. It also provides a canopy to keep our employees safe and dry from weather during summer and winter, of course, and allows us to provide some light and a clean, safe space to store orders in the last hour before customers pick up. And I'll stop there. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, John, it looks like a lot of other businesses in this year, you are adjusting with the times.
We, we are, we are definitely trying to stay agile.
Absolutely. Is there anybody else out there with any comments on this developments piece?
There is not.
Okay. So at that time, now we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve resolution number two eight nine two two, approving a preliminary site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility on property located at 3600 Highway 151.
Second. We got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine two two, approving the preliminary site development plan for the Isles Online Pickup. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine two three, approving a final site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility on property located at 3600 Highway 151.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine two three for the, approving the final site development plan for Isles Online Pickup Facility. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine two four, approving a contract amendment with Fuel for Library Virtual Branch, a website development.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine two four relating to a contract amendment with Fuel for Library, related to the Library Virtual Branch Development. So this will standardize their software to enable them to make changes in-house in the future. Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine two four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine two five, approving a community attraction and tourism grant agreement between the Enhance Iowa Board and the City of Marion, accepting a grant of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the new building project.
Second.
So we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number two eight nine two five to proudly accept a grant of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our new library building project. Fantastic news, great amount, great support from that Enhance Iowa Board. All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine two five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number two eight nine two six, approving a contract addendum to fixed base operator lease with Craig Campbell and Priscilla Steele for Branch Library.
Second.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second for resolution number two eight nine two six related to the contract addendum for our Branch Library up on 7th Avenue. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving resolution number two eight nine two six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The resolution is approved. Okay, it is now time for other department discussion. And at this time, we'll have a storm response update.
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy to report that we are in the midst of doing our second pass for debris removal. The entire community's been covered once. As you saw with the shift over the last week and a half, we then, after picking up most of the vegetative debris on the first pass, started picking up all of the demolition and construction debris as well. That is handled a little bit differently. That, those items can be landfilled, so they get taken out, and then we get billed for the tonnage on those versus dealing in cubic yards like we do with the vegetative debris. With the tree debris, we figure we're going to be at eight hundred thousand cubic yards plus by the time everything is done. The big news, I think, for the city council is that we are hitting the point where we want to put the, let the public know that as we start moving into the third pass, we are going to need to impose a deadline for when items need to be put out in the right of way for pickup. And we've made enough progress in the last couple of weeks that we are looking at the nineteenth of October to make sure that everybody has everything out so that we can pick it up with the last pass. At that point, you'll see our contractors start to demobilize and a reduction in the number of vehicles as we move more into the recovery phase. We have started working with area partners and the Parks Department has had some conversations about what we need to do for starting to recover the canopy. Cedar Rapids is working on a broader program with Trees Forever, and it sounds like they're anticipating dedicating a million dollars a year for the next ten years to their relief program. And so we're looking at what opportunities we can have to piggyback on that and be able to provide some resources as well. One of the small, I hesitated, call it a benefit, but one of the things coming out of this is that, as the council knows, we've been budgeting for a significant amount of ash tree removals, and been doing them annually per year, about seventy to ninety thousand dollars. By the time this event is done, most of those are going to be gone. So the dollars that we were planning to spend over the next couple of years for ash tree removals could potentially go towards reforestation programs. So you'll be seeing a bit of a shift from us from cleanup phase to more the recovery phase. And any questions?
Can you talk a little bit more about the October nineteenth date? Number one, clarify what that means, and then how we're going to make sure that's very well communicated to everybody in Marion?
I think the Public Services Commission and the contractor, Ryan, really worked out that date, finalized that as the date for when we need to have the debris out as of today. So we'll be working with Amber to push that communication out to the public, let everything know. And what I would say is that, you know, we still have the option, even if the contractors are demobilized, if there's stragglers here and there, we can use force account labor to go out and pick those up. So it wouldn't mean that we would have necessarily a hard stop, will not come out and pick anything up, but we want to get the bulk of the third cleanup done by then.
Will that third cleanup also include non-tree debris? Because I know the majority of that got picked up the first time, but I've had some people ask me if there's going to be another pass for non-tree debris.
I think we would anticipate continuing to pick that up.
Okay. So we're really talking about these large trucks that have been out there a little short time past October nineteenth of having an end date. Okay.
And we do have, I think, at this point, most of the parks are completely open, other than the ones that sustained such significant damage that, you know, we, there's nothing there really for people to use. Most of the trails are open to the maximum extent that we can. I think on the public property side, we've made really significant improvement or progress over the last couple of weeks. Foxwoods is the one that I, I think is the one that is going to have the most negative impact from the whole thing. I know Trees Forever is actually using it as the poster child for the worst damage that you could anticipate having to a forest, and it's essentially going to end up being clear cut and have to be approached as a reforestation project. So, you know, when I talk about the recovery taking a couple of years to really see progress, that's one that's going to take generations.
Okay. Questions? Collette?
Just a point of clarification. So the October nineteenth date is the date when everybody needs to have all of their items on the curb.
Right.
Is that right? And then cleanup will continue after that. So the nineteenth is the date for the citizens to have what you need out on the curb.
Yeah, and there's, to be honest, there's a little bit of a balancing act there because of some of the debris that starts to show up, you start to question, is it really the storm or are people cleaning out their garage? So we have to have a date.
Yeah, I've seen some of that out there. It looks a little marginal.
Little suspicious.
Yeah, indeed.
With that extra mattress I have in the basement I've been trying to get rid of.
All right. Any, any questions by anybody for Lon regarding the storm update? Okay. Well?
Yes, so can you update on with what's going on with FEMA and getting commercial properties picked up?
Yeah, we had, FEMA did kick back our request for commercial properties. They're asking for more specific detail about the exact commercial properties that we want to be able to pick up. We had done more of a blanket request, so we have some additional information that we will need to get from them. We've asked our debris tech, the company that you approved the payment for tonight, to go out and gather some data, take pictures, code the addresses, so that we can be very specific about the ones that we're asking for the preapproval on.
Good question. Yeah.
Yeah, Grant.
So does, does the Indian Creek Country Club fall into that category?
Absolutely.
Okay, because they have a
Mountain.
Mountain, yeah, of the tree.
They got two mountains. Can't see one of them.
Yeah, and when you think about what you have to do in order to be able to pick up non-residential debris, one of the big keys is, does it present a public hazard? And I think with, as that continues to dry out, simply the fire danger that it presents becomes more acute with every passing day.
Okay.
So if there's a commercial property that does need some debris picked up, should they contact anyone, or is it just going to be, they're going to go down every street?
We should have a pretty good list, probably in about a week, that we can provide. So if you have any questions, by all means, they can send us an email, send us a notification just to make sure that they're on that list. I will say, one of the things you have to watch with the commercial properties is FEMA will ask, do you have insurance? So if it's a case where it's simply a commercial property owner that doesn't want to submit a claim or something like that, FEMA frowns on that quite heavily. So that's that balancing act that we really have to watch.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Lon.
Yep.
All right, at this time, it's time for a public forum. This time is set aside for comments from the public. And these, these are items that the city council will not take any action on your comments at this time, at this meeting due to requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so at a future meeting. Do we have anybody waiting with any comments for this public forum?
Yes, I received one comment prior to the meetings. I'll read it.
Go ahead.
Okay, it's from Frank Sherman, 4170 Canton Court. He wanted to say that Marion local government has done a superb job handling the aftermath of the derecho. The mayor, city staff, Chamber of Commerce, and others took care of the citizens in many ways. The city went above and beyond the call of duty. It should be noted that orchestrating and coordinating the many aspects of the response and attending to all the details while still taking care of day-to-day business was the same manager. By all measures, Lon did a great job. He should be commended for his leadership and management during this time of stress on the community.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Any others? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Grant.
Well, I think on the heels of our storm response and recovery activities, as well as the numerous number of things that I have observed and been involved with over the, essentially, six months since I've joined council, I do just want to say thank you to my fellow council members for their guidance and input and sharing insights with me. And I also, again, want to thank all the staff and leadership personnel that have given me inputs about various and sundry manners that have come to my attention, as well as helping me understand the ebb and flow of the work that's before them. So thanks for all of that.
Okay, Randy?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just a few things I'd like to bring forward. I'd like to also, again, congratulate the library on their achievement with the grant from CAT. That's phenomenal. It's always exciting when we can not only monetarily move the needle, but also to have Marion be recognized from a state level for the efforts and the hard work that everyone's putting into. As I kind of watch these grants go out, I kind of track and monitor these things as they go and they're spread across the state of Iowa. It's always very exciting to see what's coming back into our local community here. So we're super, super excited. And thank you for everyone's hard work in getting it to that point. It is extremely difficult to fill out these grant applications, and sometimes you have to have experience in just writing those alone. and sometimes you have to have experience in just writing those alone. Congratulations again to the, the police department. I've had the opportunity to witness and watch how Foundation Two works, and this will be, this will be incredible for our community. So there's times that our police are called, and this is out of their bailiwick. And so it's important to give the, the police department the tools that they need, just as if it were any other department. So this is, this is going to be a very exciting one, and, and we certainly could use that. To the rest of the staff members, thank you for your continued help. I know we're all shooting emails out and asking questions that may seem to be elementary. Seth helped me out this week with some of the questions about our trails and, and parks and stuff. For the individuals that are starting to see some of the relief to this storm, it's exciting to see that they are wanting to resume back to their normacy, and some of that's just getting out and using the trails. So that's very exciting. So we're, I know that I am working very hard with these folks that are asking these questions. Thanking them first and foremost for their patience as we continue to, to continue these efforts. And Seth brought up something I was completely unaware of, and that is, is we're still moving heavy, you know, heavy equipment up and down these trails, and trails could be very dangerous. So we certainly want to try to get people to acknowledge that if a trail is marked closed, please give us that time and that, that room that we need to actively get through here and get things cleaned up and for their safety, you know, please watch, you know, monitor these signs that are out there. So with that, I just want to say thank you again to all the staff members. Thanks.
Colette?
Yeah, just two things. So as with Randy, I'm excited about the Foundation Two appointment. I think that's a game changer for our community. And I'm, I'm just really excited about the opportunities that will present, both for our police force and for our residents. So it's a big deal. Really appreciate the work and, the work and commitment to doing that. So thank you. And then secondly, it just struck me as, it was sort of cool to have some of our citizens participate this evening, right? So they stepped in and they spoke up, and they were professional, provided their inputs and their insights, and we don't often get that. And so I just, not that they're still listening to us, right? I'm sure they're long gone, but really do appreciate hearing more from our residents and citizens, so.
Okay, Will?
All good.
Okay, Renee?
Yeah, I, I mean, everything everyone said, ditto on all of that, the library, Foundation Two. I do want to thank the staff. I know I thank a lot of you individually, but, you know, from individual constituents reaching out, that's a phone call and emails or texts out of your day to all of the derecho help. I, my office or the company I work for is in Davenport, and they didn't get hit nearly as bad, and so a lot of them have asked. And I'm always just so proud and grateful to be a Marion resident and tell them about the response. I mean, obviously, it's heartbreaking what happened here, but I feel like as a community, I'm so proud to share all that everyone has done, and it really came from the leadership. And Lon, I do, you know, I echo what Frank said, and coming from Frank, who is someone who attends every meeting in person when he could and online because of the pandemic, you know, really take that to heart because he is plugged in. I think as much as a council member without all of the papers and the voting rights, but so, and then I do also want to say, you know, I'm really, you know, proud of our community for passing the mask recommendation or advisory, whatever we ended up calling that. I had to get tested. I got contacted by somebody who, you know, my hairdresser last week, she tested positive. She let me know I was in her chair for two hours, and I got tested, which is why I wasn't here Tuesday. I didn't have my result yet. It was a super easy test. I tested negative, but wearing a mask helps because we were in close proximity for a couple of hours. So I just want to, you know, use this opportunity for the, the people who might listen to the recording, because I agree with Colette, everybody's long gone because the Bucks game starts in 15 minutes. But at any rate, wear your mask, keep everybody safe. Thanks.
Okay, just a couple of comments. Obviously, our landscape in Marion is changing. We had the groundbreaking for our library. So if we look across the street, that is changing very rapidly. We had a great crowd there for the groundbreaking. The bridge over Seventh Avenue by McDonald's, that is coming down. So that is looking very different. I mean, if you've lived in Marion for a long time, that bridge has been there forever. I think Will found a piece on there, what was the date of that? 19, 1915, talking about the Milwaukee Railroad. The other piece I want to talk about briefly is the article that the Gazette had about our mayor. That was an incredible article about an incredible person. I've lived in Marion for a very long time, and I will go on record to say he is one of the best mayors this city has ever seen. The mark of a true leader, well, let's put it this way. Anybody can be a good leader in good times. The mark of a good leader is a leader who can lead in bad times. And that's what we're seeing in this city. We're seeing that from our mayor. We're seeing it from Lon. We're seeing it from all of our directors. So again, we've talked a lot about this in the past. Great to be talking about an end date for these trucks running around, picking up things, shows an incredible amount of effort. So the leadership has truly come out and been demonstrated by the city. Okay, now it's time for closed session.
Your Honor, I move to, I make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for motion to adjourn to closed session according regarding litigation as permitted under section 21.51(c) of the Code of Iowa Legal Opinion, please.
Your Honor, I review the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section 21.51(c).
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Cadelia?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Okay, our session is now moved to a closed session, and we will come back after the end of that.